I've scheduled attendees for today. Sheriff Derek Cunningham, Probate Judge J.C. Love, and Attorney Terry Reynolds with Levitate Legal and Consulting. Items to be considered on the formal agenda. Consider application for Cycle Nine of Alabama 911 Board Grant.
I didn't mean that.
Consider unbudgeted position fee request for a crime gun analyst. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Are there any additions?
One thousand dollars, Second Chance Foundation. From agency, right?
Yes, sir. Are there any others? Consider... Agencies. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
I have one. Do you want me to write it down for you?
Sure. And lastly, consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Okay. All right. Consider travel and training request. And those are all our items in the formal session this morning.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right.
All right. Item number one is a waive rule item for to consider a bid awards Climate Services Incorporated to provide HVAC preventative maintenance and repairs to various county buildings. In the memo that you received, Climate Services was the only bidder to provide HVAC services. And due to the amount of time that it took for us to negotiate with them is why we need this to be a waived rule item. So we are requesting, as our recommendation, that the commission award this bid to Climate Services in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars annually.
No objection.
Item number two, Sheriff Cunningham.
Good morning. All right. I'm glad to see everybody made it here this morning. We had some bad weather and I am glad and praying that everybody be able to get through tomorrow as well. So, good to see so many smiling faces. All right.
What can we do for today, Sheriff?
This is for the salary adjustment for this deputy sheriff's cadet classification.
Yeah. You see the memorandum from city-county personnel where they did the study on that position? And the recommendation came back from them? And I'm requesting that you all approve it.
All right. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Next agenda.
Thank you, Sheriff.
And I ain't got propped up. I'll go do some talking.
Probate Judge J.C. Love for item number three. Consider amendment number three to contract with Ingenuity.
Good morning.
Good morning, probate. Thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Glad to see everyone this frigid Tuesday morning. I think we were going to skip item, just go into table item three to the next commission agenda and just proceed with the budget change this morning. The budget change is to realign our budget to bring on a temporary person to fill the position of our probate court supervisor. So the funds have been budgeted, just transferring them over the temporary services in order to be able to bring on someone until we hire a full-time probate accounting supervisor.
Any questions on the budget change?
No, I don't have any questions.
That'd be next agenda.
All right. Thank you.
J.C., also on number two, I see we're going, number two, number three?
Three.
Number three. We are going, you said just to move that on down the road for now, but J.C. will meet with Michael and we may be coming to the commission at our next meeting to waive rules on this item if we get all the information done. So, it may come up on the next meeting. So, just giving everybody a heads up on that.
Thank you. Item number four. Consider resolutions to allocate ARPA funds to ARPA and ARPA-FLEX compliant current and future budget items and to reallocate certain allocations. Terry Reynolds is not here as of yet.
She's walking, she's walking in the door.
Okay. So she's...
Take her a few minutes to get upstairs.
We do have, would the commission like to, while she's coming in and kind of getting settled, would the commission like to move to item number six?
Please.
Item number six, consider 2024 county employee blood drives.
That'd be next agenda.
All right.
Eddie? He said there was something about homelessness. I know y'all here for that.
Yes, sir. The Consolidated Homeless Service Center Resolution.
Okay. You want to come up and talk about that a little bit? Well, yes, Terry. Okay, we might come back. Terry, perfect timing. We're here to talk about the resolution to allocate ARPA funds to the FLEX compliant current and future budget items. You're on the stage.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We didn't even give you time to catch your breath.
Just take a deep breath in. You got it.
That's all right. I got it. I got it. This resolution is to do what we call a swap. This would swap the current allocation of ARPA funds for the sewer projects to something that is already in the county's budget that is eligible expenditure. And then it would free up that money in the general fund so that you could use the money on the sewer project. Why is this important? The deadlines, all right? The sewer project is just, it's going to take several years to complete A to Z. There's no way to complete it, what we're being told by the engineers, by December of 2026. So this takes that time constraint off of it and gives you the flexibility to do the work within a timeframe without having to worry about running up against the December 2026 deadline.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The eight million, sixty-five thousand, ninety dollars, that's the county portion of the sewer project. Have we, where are we? Can you just bring us up to date, Terry, on just where we are with that?
So, yes, sir. So, I had a conversation with Montgomery Water and Sewer on Friday with leadership and their attorneys. They have gone through a bid process to select engineers to do the design components of that. And so that is complete. They have been working with ADM on the ADM grant for three point two five million dollars. I think you, leadership, met with Susan at the end of last month and there were some concerns about the terms of that agreement and the timelines, namely that it would require all of the bid work to be done by April of this year, which is just not a reasonable timeline. So there's some concerns with that, but that is an ongoing discussion. I expect to get within the next hour from Montgomery Water and Sewer a cost estimate of what it would cost to complete the pre-development work as well as the land acquisition and easement requirements for that first phase of these projects. And that includes the project in Madison Park and the projects in West Montgomery. And so they will give us an estimate for that. And that's all up until we get to a point of construction. So as soon as, if we can do the swap, and we have already worked with Ms. Thomas to identify some eligible funds within the county budget, so as soon as we can, you know, make that go, well then you will be at a place where you could transfer that first portion of the funds over to them so that they could start the design work.
Terry?
Yes.
With the funds that we would transfer over, will we also be able to use those funds, say if we did get a grant and there was an amount that we had to pay in association with the grant? Could that money also be used to...
Yeah, there's, what that is called, Commissioner Harris, is braiding. When you use, you know, your general funds with federal funds, and that's typically not an issue with braiding funds like that, as long as the project parameters are compliant with whatever the terms of the grant agreement are. So yes, you would be, you would likely be able to do that, yes.
So in terms of legal parameters, if we use the, those funds that have been dedicated to sewer for some other items related to county business, what guarantee do we have that those funds would later, that we could later take those funds and apply them to a sewer project?
Well, you have the, that's a great question, Commissioner, and it's really in that resolution. And so you are doing the swap and in the resolution, what we're seeking to do, and if we need to tighten the language, we can, but is obligate the ARPA funds towards X in your general fund budget. And we're going to go ahead and obligate any funds that are freed up in your general fund for this sewer project.
And one last question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Regarding this, regarding this, have anyone contacted Treasury to get an exception to the rule in terms of the timelines for allocation of the money and spending the money for this particular project, considering all the difficulties we've had with sewer?
Well, so, we have not contacted Treasury directly about this project, but Treasury is being contacted by localities and especially by states about the timelines for sewer and broadband infrastructure in particular. Right now, they haven't said anything definitive about whether they're going to extend the deadline. A lot of folks within our circle who are doing compliance and monitoring these projects believe it will be very difficult for them not to, just because these projects take time and there's all sorts of unforeseen things that could extend them. But right now, we don't have a definitive word from Treasury whether they would be willing to extend the deadline for this particular project or for any sewer project that may run into issues as the deadline approaches.
Any other questions for Terry?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just let you guys know that I did have a conversation with the city about this, and so this item is on their agenda. I think they're likely to carry it over so that they would vote in line with when the county votes for it. So I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that.
We've got some people here for the homelessness. I know Eddie Compton from the city is here and Ken Austin, Rabbi, is here, some other people are here on behalf of that. Can you give us an update on that? Or one of y'all want to give an update on that?
I would invite Eddie to come up. I can give you on the compliance side that we've worked with, Mr. Compton from the city and Reverend Austin and, what's his name?
Richard Williams.
Reverend Richards. I'm so sorry your name was on the tip of my tongue. I apologize. But we've been working with them and they have, there's a group, a consortium of organizations that work in the homelessness space. And so what they are doing now is finalizing their comprehensive plan, which is done. What we're waiting for on the compliance part is a line item budget. So what you guys would get would not be X number is going towards this program, but you would get a line item budget letting you know how, dollar for dollar, how the funds would be expended.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Allow me to speak. So currently what we have in Montgomery is homeless and they're going all over the city trying to get service. And we're trying to establish a foundation where they can go to one building and get not only food, shelter, and clothing...
But also, they can get, CareStar is going to provide mental health services, Coaster is going to provide substance abuse services, Trinum is already in the building that we selected, so they'll be able to do adult education and some other things with them as well. But what we're trying to do is consolidate that effort so that everybody's working together. And fortunately for us, we have about fourteen to seventeen organizations that have come together that said they wanted to work together to do this. And I'd like for some of them to stand right now that's been in those meetings. Would you stand for me, please? And everybody's in agreement right now that this is what we need in Montgomery. A perfect example of what we have already in Montgomery working with domestic violence is the One Place Family Justice Center. And they've been around for about twelve years and they have the same concept that we're trying to do for the homeless.
Eddie, can I interrupt you one second?
Yes, sir.
Starting with Ken, everybody that's standing, will you introduce yourself and tell us what your affiliation is?
I'm Ken Austin. We're the Executive Director of the Mercer House and Task Force.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I am the Director of the Executive Department of the task force.
Richard Williams, Service Executive Director of the Decisive with our collaboration in fiberized healthcare services and our health ledgers.
Fred?
Oh, Commander Williams, Executive Director of Pierce Care and Health, and Commander of the Native Union Hospital. Alvin Ross with Firestorm out of each executive director.
Yes, ma'am.
Torres Davis, Executive Director, Friendship Mission, the homeless shelters.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody knew who everybody was, so.
Yes, sir. And I'm just here basically just to answer any questions that you all have. I know the city has already passed their resolution for the million dollars and we're just humbly asking you all to do the same.
Eddie, the building you have identified, tell everybody where that building is.
So that's the MAP Center on Twelve Delano Drive. That's the old WSFA building.
So everybody's on board? Everybody that stood up is on board then?
And I don't have any questions, Eddie. You and I talk constantly about this. And so I already know the work that you're trying to do and I'm on board and ready to move on, move forward with it.
So, Commissioner Ziegler, were you, are you the individual that's representing the county during these discussions? Because I was just curious as to whether or not the county was represented during the discussions in terms of how we ought to put this together. Have no problem with the one-stop shop, for lack of a better way to describe it. I think that serves a purpose to have all of these entities on the one roof and address in homelessness. So are you the one that has been representing the county?
It's Kendall and Regina were in those meetings.
Kendall and Regina.
I've been involved too.
I think leadership does.
Yeah, that, you know, that's one thing I have always pushed for is to have one voice, one location where everybody knows because, you know, we've had so many different groups, great groups, come here and ask for money and we have, you know, helped them with, we're giving, you know, some money over here and some money over here. And now one time we can have a unified approach. And I think that's exactly what we need. So if I'm a homelessness person or have homelessness, people in my family, whatever, I know where to go.
Exactly.
In the past, I could have picked and choose and now I know one location, one stop.
But this, I'm understanding, don't get me wrong, I support what you're doing. I've read your program, Eddie. And of all the programs, believe me, of all the proposals that's come out of this ARPA money, yours is the best and the one that I have most confidence in that's going to work, believe me. So I support you.
Thank you, sir.
And I just want to be clear on that, but, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it's going to solve the problem. You're talking about solving, because we have One Place Family Justice Center, but we still have those organizations still coming because that's where you go to get the resource.
Exactly.
But you still have those nonprofits that are operating and they still have operating funds and executive directors and development people that are going to come down here and ask for money. So this is not going to stop that, Doug. But I think what it does do, it does centralize the places, the place where a person can go and not have to travel all over town to get these services, to get all these services in one place. I think that's an excellent idea, you know? And I did read through your plan and it's sterile and I know, I know, I served with you on the One Place Family Justice Center. So I know that you're capable of seeing this thing through and getting it done. I have a lot of confidence in the program.
Thank you.
And the success of the program.
In terms of the long-term objective, I know two million dollars, you know, with all you're trying to do, that didn't go very far.
Right.
What are the plans for funding this operation long-term? Any thoughts about that?
Yes, thank you so much for asking that question. I should have mentioned it. So the way we actually developed this concept was we saw where the federal government had a Consolidated Homeless Service Center grant. And we used their model to create the RFP for this particular concept. So that's one way that we're going to try to get more funding for the Consolidated Homeless Service Center. And then, of course, philanthropic organizations and then, you know, it'll be one place for the city and the county to be able to fund and maintain rather than trying to give to all these individuals, small and large organizations. This is something that the city and the county can control. Right now, you have regional entities and there's nothing wrong with that. They're doing an amazing job, but we need something that we can actually say, hey, look, this is what we want for Montgomery, Alabama, and this is how we want it to work. We want you to prioritize certain things first. And that's what this concept is going to do.
And I know the main thing, you don't want to just keep putting people in beds for a short period of time. I understand, based on my discussion with you, that we are interested in permanent housing.
Yes.
Now, do we have the housing stock here currently to really, really, I think you want fifty percent of the people who actually show up to take advantage of the homeless shelter to really be placed in permanent housing?
So the discussions that we're having right now is when they do the point-in-time count, there's anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred homeless people on the streets on an average night. So we're looking at that and saying that we know, based on conversations with nonprofit organizations and other people that have been homeless, that we can actually look in Montgomery and say, hey, we can find somewhere for them to stay with our rapid rehousing, with the shelter that we have, we know is full, but we got other people that are trying to establish shelters in Montgomery. For instance, the Haven, I think I sent you guys that proposal as well, is going to house or shelter about eighty-two homeless people. And then we also have a meeting with the Regional Director for Salvation Army and they're actually looking at two locations. They're coming to Montgomery on the twenty-third, I believe, and we're going to show them two locations where we've got a pretty good idea of the community and that we won't get any pushback from the community for those locations. I don't want to disclose that now until they look at it and approve it, but hopefully that'll work out. And then that'll be another sixty to seventy beds as well of just emergency shelter. And then our long-term goal is to make sure we put them in homes. Like you said, you can't end homelessness unless you put homeless in homes. So using that rapid rehousing money and also looking at working with different real estate agents and other people, we can try to do that here in Montgomery.
And you, last question, Mr. Chairman. You have the Haven, I was looking for that. I was, where in the world could that be? And so I rode, rode, rode from one end of Terminal Road to the other and I finally found it.
Oh, good, good.
So, that's supposed to be eighty-two beds, you're going to somehow convert that space to accommodate eighty-two beds?
That's the plan, yes, sir.
And that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Three hundred and fifty-five thousand, yes, sir.
And so do you have details in terms of how that money is going to bring this property up to where we want it at and so forth?
I believe I sent that to you. Yes, sir. Reverend Austin, did you want to come and elaborate on that particular property? I'm not familiar with the nuances of the details. I just sent that proposal that he sent me to you all.
Did it have the numbers on it in terms of...
Where the individual costs are going to be? No, sir, it didn't.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I take a question?
Birthday, by the way.
Thank you, thank you.
His birthday's going to be Thursday.
I was there looking for you.
Thank you.
Well, I saw him that morning.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I took care of him that morning.
So I will be old, yes. Yes, sir.
This property, the Haven, I mean, I don't know, I couldn't get any of it, but I'm just curious as to the specifics in terms of the three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Do we have some details of how that money's going to be spent to bring this property up to standards so that we can house, what, eighty-two?
Yes, sir. We do have a detailed plan that I did send to Eddie. I could get that to you, your hands, but I can just tell you that is the renovation and to bring that property up to par. It's on four acres of land, yes.
And who owns that property?
The Mercer House owns it, yes.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, tell us, we've got a few minutes. Ken, update us on the old casinos and what you're doing over there.
So we're working at the old casinos with the Manor House. The Manor House is going to be a food concept place where we will be putting out a thousand meals a day in the city and county of Montgomery. We are in the process now of getting the Hoods installed in that facility. So as soon as that's done, we are literally, we're already putting out seven hundred meals a day throughout the Mercer House. That's the after-school program, which is two hundred children. That's in the old common ground facility that we have two hundred children there every day. The Mercer House has put it out five hundred meals a day throughout the city and county of Montgomery every day, so, yes.
Anything else you want to share with us?
Thank you for my birthday wishes.
I had a question for Eddie. You mentioned that each night there are approximately three hundred and fifty to five hundred homeless. Is that Montgomery or the River Region?
That's just Montgomery, yes, ma'am.
How did you arrive at that number?
So every year, Hands-on River Region and the Mid-Alabama Coalition for the Homeless do what they call a pit count. It's a point-in-time count. And I think that's coming up here, if not this week, next week, but anyway, they actually go out and they do a count of the homeless for that particular night on that particular day. And that's what we use to apply for federal funding through HUD and other places as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank y'all for being here, all the leaders in our clergy and y'all that work with folks that are homeless, thank y'all for being here. The, you know, we've done everything so far. I've got a few more things. Is anything else you have?
No, sir. We only, that was all, those are all the items for the information session.
Doug, can I, Doug, can I have one moment, please?
Oh, yeah.
Can I call Terry back? Terry, I got a question up for you. Where are we with the Violence Prevention Program along with the city? I know we hear the county needs to move forward. Am I correct on our part?
That's correct. So, the RFP was to, that came before you at your last meeting, was to hire a company to provide technical assistance. What that technical assistance would do would be to assist the Office of Violence Prevention staff in their training to assist them in identifying trusted community violence interveners to help in the community and talk with the young people who you're trying to attract. And then also just to build out a timeline for how to build, for your future programs, specifically the hospital-based violence intervention program. So the city has approved that resolution and contract and has signed it. The county has not. The total cost of that program is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it would be about a seventy thousand dollar commitment from the county. The timeline, which I believe I sent to you all a few weeks back, but it's about a twelve month program and the goal is to really stand up that office in a way where it has the infrastructure to go out and build these future programs for violence prevention.
Okay. And I encourage all my county commissioners, if they haven't, to get in touch with the Office of Violence Prevention at the city and go with them. I've gone with them to Jeff Davis, Carver, South Lawn and sat with them while they sit there with kids and have discussions with them and work with them. And it is really, I didn't know till I did that, what they really did and how they helped young people that are, what they are going through with violence, who have incurred violence, have violence in their home. And so I really encourage some of my county commissioners to take the time to go with them to actually see what the program is about so we can go ahead and get a move with them on this program. I find that we need this program in the school system, not only in the school system, out in the streets of Montgomery County.
Okay. Cheryl Johnson, you're here, Leadership Montgomery. Carmen and Dan and I are scheduled to be there on Thursday, right?
Right.
Oops. I want to bring that up because, Dan, it might be all you right now that we can, I've got the...
I want to go get a balance cross.
And then also just to build out a timeline for how to build, for your future programs, specifically the hospital-based violence intervention program. So the city has approved that re- uh, resolution and contract and has signed it. Um, the county has not. The total cost of that program is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it would be about a seventy thousand dollar commitment from the county. Um, the timeline, which I believe I sent to you all a few weeks back, but it's about a twelve-month program. And the goal is to really stand up that office in a way where it has the infrastructure to go out and build, uh, these future programs for violence prevention.
Okay, okay. And I encourage all my county commissioners, if they haven't, to get in touch with the, um, Office of Violence Prevention at the city and go with them. I've gone with them to Jeff Davis, Carver, um, South Lawn and sat with them while they sit there with kids and have discussions with them and work with them. And it is really, um, I didn't know till I did that, what they really did and how they help ki- young people, um, that are, what are they are going through with violence, who have, uh, incurred violence, have violence in their home. Um, and so I really encourage some of my county commissioners to take the time to go with them to actually see what the program is about, so we can go ahead and get a move with them on this program. I found this, find that we need this program, um, in the school system, not only in the school system, out in the streets of Montgomery County.
Okay, uh, Cheryl Johnson, you're here, Leadership Montgomery. Uh, Carmen and, and Dan and I are scheduled to be there on Thursday, right?
Right.
Oops.
I, I wanna bring that up because, but Dan, it might be all you right now that we can, I've got the, uh.
I, I wanna go to Val and Cross too.
I do too.
Everybody wanna jump on that one.
Yeah, and, and I got just pulled into, I gotta finish my credits for county commission at all.
Is there any way to, is there any way to swap us with the city as far as what time we're presenting? Is that possible? Can you, can you? Anytime.
It's at eleven.
Yeah, anytime but eleven, yeah.
Okay, and if you do that, I may, Rhonda may come in my spot, because I have, um, you know, county, as a county commissioner, most people don't know we have to attend class. So I, I got a class at, uh, uh, Auburn University to attend, okay.
Yeah, cause if we wanna do that, I look forward to that every year or so. If you can work it out, I mean, I, I think the Valley and Cross thing might be over with by, by eleven-thirty.
It's not gonna take that long, no.
Yeah, so we, we, you know, we could do eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty or something like that probably. Uh, but you have your lunch like at twelve-thirty, right? Is, is it a working lunch or y'all do? Let's make it a working, could you do that? We could start eleven-thirty. Could you work that out?
Now, you're saying that the Valley and Cross starts at eleven, so it would be tight to get there by eleven-thirty.
We're not gonna make eleven-thirty.
Okay.
Eleven, eleven forty-five might be reasonable, but.
Noon.
Noon, I'm with, yeah, noon would probably be even better.
And I'm not available at that time.
You're not available.
Well, uh, who am I getting my place? Can I get Commissioner, um?
Well, she can get two people there, that's, you know.
What's for next? The Vice President.
Vice President.
Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Madam Secretary.
I'll be there as long as we can get clear at eleven, eleven o'clock hour.
Yeah, cause I don't know if the ones from the city are gonna be at Valley and Cross or not. They may be too, I don't know. So, okay. All right. Yeah, it's, it's at, uh, uh, it's at the, it's on their campus at Troy, correct? I, I think it is.
It's downtown.
It's close to you. I mean, it's, it's within two minutes. What's that?
Is it open to the public?
I'm sure it is, I, I would think.
Where's the Frank Johnson?
Yeah, so it's close.
So it's like, we might go over there for that as part of our plasticating, but we'll work.
Yeah, we'll find out, yeah. That'd be something pretty cool, so. I do have one other, uh, two other things, but, um, uh, Latino Festival, there's one planned for February. So I wanna put it on the agenda with approval from the commission for the next agenda to approve their, uh, on-site premise, uh, special event license like we have in the past. It wasn't on here today. Uh, but there's not two meetings between now and when they have their festival. So I'd like to move that to the next agenda to allow that, unless there's some rejection to that. So Kendall, can you add that one?
Yes, sir.
And colleagues, we received, uh, an email from Amelia Strickland regarding the, um, the Fitzgerald Museum. They were asking for, um, an emergency allotment for the first quarter of twenty-four. Is anyone interested in?
I, I, I'd really like to see us help, help them.
They're just going to. How much? Five thousand or?
The original email was sent to us on January the fourth. Again, it was from Amelia Strickland.
And the request was five thousand?
The request was open-ended, so I asked her to send their budget, and their Q-one budget was about twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do we, we have any thing in the cookie jar?
None left.
Zero.
That, uh.
So it would be individual.
I didn't get it.
Carmen.
I'm telling you, I'm looking at bottom.
Yeah, she didn't send it to you, you're right.
Yeah, see?
You're not on, she's not on here.
I'm not on there.
All right, let me, I'm gonna forward it, I'll forward it to you.
Well, I got five thousand toward it.
Five thousand dollars from agency?
Five thousand from my agency toward the Fitzgerald. I gotta call Amy. I think Julian has been having some health issues and, uh.
And he was their major fundraiser.
Right.
Uh, Kendall, I'll do five thousand from my designated. I just sent it to you, Carmen, but here's the, the, there's their Q-one budget.
Okay, you sent it to me? Cause I can't probably see on your phone. Your phone's so small.
Oh, but you've got your glasses on.
But they don't work for real.
They're just for looks. All right, anyone else interested in helping the Fitzgerald Museum?
Kendall, I'll do twenty-five hundred from my agency, and that will put them at half of what they're looking for.
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
Regina, has anybody signed up to speak at ten? Got James, okay. James is covered, okay. James, unless you wanna say something, you're covered, okay. Um, I do wanna, I do wanna say something, uh, Sheriff Dan Jones, I mentioned last meeting, had passed away. The funeral was, uh, last Monday. And, uh, I just wanna commend the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Cunningham, Wesley, um, Colonel Richardson, on just an amazing tribute to a former sheriff in Montgomery County. I wish you could have been there to see it. It made me so very proud to see that the procession from the church on the corner of Bond and Eastern Bypass, procession went down Bond, turned on the Eastern Bypass, got on the interstate, got off at Perry Hill Road, got off on Harrison Road. But at every light, every intersection, you saw sheriff's deputies, Montgomery police officers, state troopers, stopped traffic, interstate was stopped, and our sheriff's deputy stood outside the car. They did not send the car, the, all the police officers and troopers stood outside the cars at attention when the procession went by. And then at the funeral, the Sheriff's Department had provided twenty-one gun salute. They provided, uh, taps, or reverly, what's it called, taps? And then they had a bagpipe. They had the presentation of the flag, the folding and all. You've been very, very proud of, of what our law enforcement people did for a fellow fallen officer. There was officers from all over the state there. It was really, really a very touching, uh, tribute to one of our own. So just wanna commend y'all. I thought it was really, really very impressive, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What do we do with the housing? Is it on next agenda, on, on today's agenda or next?
Homelessness?
Yeah.
Um, no, we, you all didn't say anything about what y'all wanted to do.
You wanna move to the next agenda?
We need to move with that. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, we'll move that to next agenda. So we'll vote on it next agenda. And we do not meet, we have a week off, cause the way the, the calendar falls, we don't meet in two weeks. We meet the first week in February, first Tuesday in February. So there will be two Tuesdays between now and our next meeting, but, uh, just.
It's hard to predict, Eddie, but I think you got the votes. You got mine, anyway.
Anybody else got anything? We got about twenty minutes?
We don't.
Anybody out there got something to say? Speak now, or? All right, we will take about a twenty-minute recess. We will start at ten o'clock sharp, since we've got plenty of time to go to restroom and chat. So ten o'clock.